Good evening, everybody. I call to order the Tuesday, November 26, 2024, meeting of the Select Board. Time is 7:03. I believe we have one member joining us remotely. In the hall, we have four members. We have Member Lou Gito, Member Joe McCrisky, Vice Chair Scott Carrera, and myself. That is, the quorum is three, so we have plenty to get started. Is Deborah available online?
She's on.
Okay. So then we also have Deborah Roberts, Member Deborah Roberts, online. Ms. Roberts, are you able to hear us? Sorry?
She's muted.
She's muted. Ms. Roberts, I think you might be muted.
We've got to have cards that say muted.
So we'll give her a second, just one minute. If we're not able to get her, we'll move on with the first order of business. Was it? Yeah. We're not going to miss a step here. Just want to make sure that she's able to join us. Ms. Roberts, let us know if you're able to hear us, okay? I'm going to text you just to see if you're not able to hear us, you'll know that we're trying to start the meeting. Oh. Sorry, we're not able to hear? We're not able to hear somebody who's speaking?
She can hear us, but we can't hear her.
She's muted.
She can hear us, she should hear us. She's muted, right?
Okay, she is able to hear us. Currently, we're not able to hear her. She's on mute. I'm not sure if there's any settings. Oh, there you are.
I'm sorry.
Excellent. Great to hear from you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first order of business, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able to, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Because we have one member remote, there's a little bit more I've got to read, so I'm just going to read through this quickly, but also we'll be taking all votes by roll call. So in accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extend the Governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. The phone number and the Google meets address are available on the agenda for the evening. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So the first order of business beyond the pledge and the call to order is executive session. There's an executive session, minutes dated January 26, 2016. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Made by Vice Chair Carrera.
So made.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCrisky. All favors say aye. We'll just take a roll call. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes as well. So we will be entering executive session and then rejoining the open session once that's completed. So for the time being, the open session is, I was supposed to take a little break here, but we'll be back in a couple of minutes. See you in a minute.
At school, and I just picked him up yesterday.
Call back to order the Select Board meeting, Tuesday, November 27, 2024. The time is now 7:32. The next order of business is to consider and discuss noise ordinance policy. Votes may be taken. I'm going to hand this over to Town Manager Tom Coulter.
Mr. Chairman, we've got before you a draft policy of a noise ordinance that was requested by a citizen, a citizen who's been suffering from parties in his neighborhood and is looking for the type of structure needed for law enforcement to take action when they go out to that meeting. My understanding is that the gentleman who requested has got comments, and whereas this is not a public hearing, I would suggest you defer this until the next meeting, and at that point, during that period, I'll take comments from Mr. Murphy and incorporate them into this final draft for your consideration. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Okay, so, you know, I think that's fine. It's, for people who offer suggestions that we follow up on, I think it's important to be able to include them, on the one hand. On the other hand, we can't have a document that's edited by 27,000 people, right? So we do need to have a little bit of control over this.
I think the point of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman, is that it's the gentleman that requested the ordinance.
Exactly, yeah. So I think extending the courtesy of offering an opportunity for them to view, make comments, and further suggestions, I think is appropriate.
Mr. Chairman?
Do other members of the board agree that we hold off a week?
I beg your pardon?
That we move this to next week?
Oh, yes, but I have comments on this as well, so can I submit them?
Absolutely. Yeah. Would appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
I suggest that it's delayed for two weeks because one week may not be sufficient for us to review all of the edits and discuss as well.
Yeah, I actually appreciate that. With Thanksgiving this Thursday, we're going to have to have the agenda out by tomorrow. So I think having two weeks offers more time for people to actually turn this around. So we'll make this something that we'll discuss on December 10 at the earliest, assuming we have a meeting that week.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Ms. McCrisky.
If I may, this is a three-page document right now, and, you know, policies really shouldn't have to be novels, so that I think that when it gets to that point, we review. I'm hoping we're not going to be planning on just voting that night because just looking at this right now and you add another page or two to it, you know, that's a lot of document to read, to assess, to research as to what's enforceable, what's not enforceable, what's needed, what's not needed, you know, what are the measurements? I mean, there's, you know, there's noise decibels that come into these things when they're done. Who's going to do that for us? You know, I mean, is there a cost to this? There's a lot of questions here that need to be answered, not just us reading our documents and sure, sounds good, let's implement it. So I just want to make sure that we put realistic timeframes on this and that everybody who's going to have a stake in enforcing it have the same opportunity to read it and provide feedback to us in the roles that they have as department heads or committee members, so we can do it right the first time. So I'm not saying I'm opposed to it at all, I just want to make sure we do it once and we do it right.
You have a, I'm bought in. I like that idea. So we'll meet on the December 10, the earliest, and this might take a couple of iterations for us to square this away, but there's, not that there's no urgency to this, but at the same time, I'd rather do it right than do it fast.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just quickly comment on that because I'm in complete support. What I've been trying to make clear for the two years I've been here is, on the agenda, we should not put "votes may be taken" on the first time. Votes can't be taken. If we give you a draft policy through you, Mr. Chairman, we take feedback from the board, either before the meeting, to me, one-on-one, or at the meeting, and it keeps getting improved until you're ready to vote on it. And so I like this approach, it's the legislative approach, on all policy matters. Just for the record, the police were involved in drafting this policy with Attorney Winter. But I think that's very prudent. So just please, the board members, send me your comments. I'll make a list of comments so you'll have them for your deliberation prior to sitting down for the meeting, and I'll take comments from the gentleman who asked for the ordinance. I think that's the proper approach to making policy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So then we'll move on to the next order of business. This is a public hearing. This is for tax reclassification hearing pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. As with all public hearings, I'm going to hand the gavel over to Vice Chair Carrera. He handles our public hearings, has a lot of experience doing it, and so far has served us extremely well on the Select Board doing exactly this. So, Mr. Carrera, this tax classification hearing is all yours.
Mr. Vice Chairman, may I ask the board, have they all received a copy of the updated summary of this request? It says three-quarters way down in summary, that's the document we should be referring to. It's an update from the original inclusion you had in your package.
This is for the classification hearing?
Yes. Oh, jeez, I thought you were doing the hearing.
Oh, sorry. Not yet.
Confused everybody until I saw you up there. What are you up there for water for?
Come join us, and I think this is the first time, you've come before the Select Board, as our new assessor, so for anybody who doesn't know you yet, and I'm not sure, we formally met once, but this is Julie Castro Diaz.
Yes.
Our new assessor, and I've heard only good things about you and the work you've done in our department, so I just want to thank you in advance for all the hard work you've put into the community. Thanks for joining us, and, sorry, the floor is Mr. Carrera's.
Julie, it has to be pretty close. I need to tread it out so it's real.
When you're ready for it.
I'll entertain a motion from the board to open this reclassification hearing. I have a motion from Mr. Gito.
Second.
And I have a second from Chairman Cavey. I'll now poll the board. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The meeting's now open, and I'm going to hand it over to you people.
Awesome.
And just give your names so everybody will hear it and hear who you are.
Absolutely. Good evening, Select.
Pull that close to you so they can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Select Board. My name is Julie Casta Diaz, Director of Assessing for the Town of Stoughton. I'd like to make a brief statement concerning the fiscal year 2025 tax rate classification. First, I would like to thank the entire staff of the Assessors' Office for their support and assistance throughout the year. With me today, I have the Board of Assessors, Stan Zoll, Janet Teal, and our consulting assessor, Deborah Secarini. The purpose of this hearing is to establish the proportion of tax levy raised by the residential and commercial class of property, also known as the factor. This hearing is required under Mass Gen Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56. The assessed values for fiscal year 2025 represent an estimate market value as of July 1, 2024, utilizing verified sales data from calendar year 2023. Assessments represent 100% of market value required by Mass Gen Laws. The Department of Revenue has certified the real and personal property values for the town as well as the new growth. The assessor is required to fairly assess 11,156 parcels, 10,437 are residential parcels, 805 are commercial and industrial parcels, 438 are personal property accounts. The total taxable value of all real and personal property is $6,245,980,512, which is a 6.4% increase from fiscal year 2024 due to market trends. This year, the town added a total of $1,705,774 in growth for residential, commercial, and industrial, primarily in commercial, as there are major improvements to several of our largest taxpayers, as well as several TIFs, tax incentive funding contracts, that ended their terms. The end of these TIFs accounted for about half of the new growth at 885,000. Also, we had large personal property utility projects that have been completed, which we get to enjoy the new growth for this year. The purpose of tonight's tax rate classification hearing is to adopt a residential factor. The Select Board will decide on how much of the tax levy the owners will share, and how much of the tax levy the owners of commercial, industrial, and personal property will share. This decision is what creates two tax rates or a split tax rate in the Town of Stoughton. The split tax rate in the Town of Stoughton taxes commercial, industrial, and personal property at a higher rate than the residential properties. If there was no shift, there would be one rate for the entire town, which would be Last year, the Select Board voted to set the shift factor at a split tax rate of 1.48. The board members will follow up with their recommendations. Thank you all, and I'd like to just review a few things in the packet. Did you all have a chance to review the packets, or would you like me?
Which packet? This one or this one?
Yes. It's the, I made them customized. So, yes. So if you'd like, I'll go through briefly the pages and I'll.
Absolutely.
Okay. So if you want to just go to page four, this is just an overview of key value changes. It has the breakdown of the percentage evaluation that we're doing from FY '24 to FY '25, so it's just a class breakdown. Now, on page five, we have the single-family value, which is raised by 5.8%, and it's highlighted right at the top. I just wanted to point out that commercial is at 9.3%, and the industrial was raised at 6.9%. But our major changes came with the multi-use of commercial at 29.2%, and the multi-use of industrial at 315%, and that included a large new solar array, which was on an industrial property. On page six, we just have the new growth. It shows the difference throughout the years. Why is there such a large difference this year? With residential, we had nine new homes built, valued over $1 million, some were custom-built. We have commercial and personal property, with several major utility projects that were completed, and as I mentioned, we had TIFs that were completed, adding about half of the new growth at 880,000. On page seven, this is just explaining the recap that was approved by DOR and the percent change by class, and also the three-year average. So right now, you could see the difference between this year's growth and the three-year average growth, and the three-year average growth is in line with what we're used to, just by looking at that number. On page eight, we have the median residential, single-family tax bill, and it's just showing a nice little graph showing how we're trending very nicely with the state's average. On page nine, we have a community comparison up top. I just listed a few contiguous towns and cities and what their tax rates were for FY '24. Ours is right there, highlighted at the bottom. Below that, we have the historical shifts, and I just kind of wanted you to see what it's been like for the past about 10 years. Last year, it was at 1.48. Now, on page 10, and excuse the font sizes, so we're going to bring down those numbers one line, but as you can see, this is our levy limit. Right now, we have a levy limit that's at $82,928,607, and with the debt inclusion, it is $88,221,257. And the way we got to that was by taking last year's levy limit, the $79,241,788, adding 2.5% plus our new growth. That brought us to the 82.9. And then we add the debt inclusion, which brings us to a max levy of $88,221,257. And real quick, these are just our historical tax rates throughout the years. Last year, residential was at $12.73, commercial, industrial, and personal property at $21.29. And this is the, I'm sorry, the next page, page 12, is just a shift table, so it's giving you a bunch of different shifts and what the outcome would be. And that leads us to a shorter version of that, which is on page 13. Right now, our average single-family for the Town of Stoughton is at $550,731. Now, looking at this range of options, if you were to pick a shift rate of 1.44, what that would do is it would make our residential tax rate 12.35, $12.35, and our commercial tax rate at $19.94. So the average tax bill would go up about 163. On the other end of that, if it was at, let's say, 1.49 of a shift, the residential would be at $12.18, and the commercial tax rate would be at $20.63, and the average tax bill would go up $69.90. And now I'm going to pass it on to Stan Zoll with the board's recommendation. In between all of that, you can see what the different shifts will cost.
We have several recommendations, one of them being the tax rate shift, which we are recommending 1.47, which is a slight difference from last year, and we can refer back to that at pages 13 and 14, which show the different scenarios. Now, there are various exemptions which we could accept or reject, and we're going to give you recommendations on those. For example, the small commercial exemption is not really a benefit, the small commercial should say owner, primarily the landlord, and would primarily is being used by only a few communities in the state. The residential exemption is primarily benefits the summer home rentals, and also only is used by certain communities within the state based on their demographics. The open space discount also would primarily benefit the different, one's 61A, 61B for the agricultural and residential recreational use, and we could use the chaplaincy exemptions instead of the open space discount. So you can refer back to the page 14 and also page three, which also gives further explanation on this matter. Further questions, we've asked the director of assessing or the assessor consultant on this matter. Thank you.
I just wanted to conclude with, though we may not see substantial amount of this substantial amount next year, there's a lot of potential for FY '26 with a lot of great projects going up. We have Stoughton Logistics going up with over 900,000 square feet of warehouse. A lot of that is set to be finished by January, the first building by March. We have a new gas station going up on the corner of Turnpike and Page Street. We have over six new houses going up with a potential value of 1 million, and the builder's actually saying that there, a few of them are going to be custom, so that's going to be valued at over 1.5 million. And last but not least, we have the 760 Washington Street project that's set to be about 60% done by the end of January. Thank you.
Here's the clarification, that the exemptions and the option discount are for you to vote on, they can, we, I should say, we recommend that neither, none of these be adopted, but those are your decisions. Thank you.
On your packet, it's on page three.
Thank you very much. That was extremely helpful, and documentation's great. I really appreciate that. I have a bunch of questions, but I'm going to move to the board first and just ask, Mr. Gito, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Ms. McCrisky?
No, I have one question.
Okay.
Next year, would you include Randolph in your?
Yes, absolutely.
And I have Stoughton in my back.
Oversight, yes.
Thank you so much. Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very short, not a question, but a comment. I don't like finance. I'm an operations guy, so when I sit here, sometimes my eyes and ears glass over, but I just wanted to commend you on the job you've done because it.
That's why I just let it go.
I actually, I could follow the way your presentation was. It wasn't too much, and it was understandable, so sometimes, you know, Tip O'Neill said it best, kiss, keep it simple, stupid, right? And you got to dumb this stuff down for, I mean, you did an awesome job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, would you like to add anything?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Julie, I concur. You and your team do such a great job in the Assessing Board, a great job. Your packages and presentations are so very easy to follow, and thank you very much. I have three questions. My first question is the table on page nine. I just wanted some clarification. I always start with a benchmark, so a direct competitor is Canton in many instances, and their residential rate is 9.97, where Stoughton's is 12.73. Now, there are many different reasons, many different drivers of a residential tax rate. You are the professional in this area. You are the professional in this area. But I first asked myself, is their budget lower, the operational budget lower than ours? The second question I have, do they not assess their property values regularly? Whereas I, oh, we do. But when we look at gaps like that, the 9.97 compared to our 12.73, what's your best guess as a professional in this area, where there is such a big gap?
The main reason would be due to their budgeting and how they have that set. So that would be the main reason as to why their tax rate may be different, whatever their shift is. So that does play a huge factor in that. That's usually the number one, yeah, answer.
Thank you, thank you. So I was on point with that, and I understand it completely. The second question I have, just to zero in on Mr. Chairman Zoll's recommendation, and that's on page 13. So if we look in the middle of the page, his recommendation was 1.47, similar to what it is currently, correct?
Yes, somewhat. It is a little bit lower, but yes.
It's lower, which would translate to a lower residential rate.
Correct.
And industrial rate.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So lower all around.
It is lower all around, and it kind of stays in line with the historical shift factors that have been chosen here.
So thank you, and you were perfectly clear. It was very understandable. What are we expecting coming down the road? Like the industrial part, the extra 900 square feet, which is, which will generate revenue for us? New growth, six new homes. You have it almost like down to a science. And I have to commend you and your team and the assessing board on that new tool that you're using. And you're using it efficiently and routinely to assess the values of homes. And you still developed a reasonable factor or recommended factor, and the fiscal year '25 tax rates are acceptable to me personally. And I would vote in favor of that when the time comes, when the board makes a motion. So thank you very much for all that you did.
Thank you. And I especially, again, want to thank the whole assessing team because it's been a year. And for the short amount of time I've been there, they've really, for lack of better terms, they've held it down. So I'm very proud of them.
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. You mentioned the TIFs coming off, and I can't see them. Which of the TIFs that are coming off the rolls right now, and what was that dollar amount?
The dollar amount for the TIFs that came off was about $880,000 in dollar amount. That we'd be.
And which ones were those? Do you recall?
Yeah, it was several large.
Okay, if you could, if you could just send me, is there anything you could just email me? That'd be great, instead of taking up everyone's time.
Sorry.
Yeah, is Amazon one of those? Do you know? Personal property, okay. Okay, yeah. Okay, if you could just send me that list, I would appreciate it. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Kavy, do you have anything you would like to add?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions along the way. And some of these things may have already been said, and I apologize if, but I would just rather have it confirmed. My hearing's not that great. One is, so we have a number of decisions we have to make, there's four altogether. Beyond the requirements for the residential factor, the other three, the open space discount, residential exemption, and small commercial exemption, the recommendation of the Board of Assessors is to opt no on all three, correct?
Correct.
Okay. With regard to the residential factor, that the recommendation for shift is 1.47?
Correct.
Okay. And so that's, that's all the important stuff. Now, one thing I can't help but notice with new growth, especially when you have a chart like what you have on page six, is that 2025, or fiscal year 2025, looked like, looks like an absolutely remarkable year for new growth in Stoughton. I'm on the DOR website right now, and it seems like other municipalities are seeing a downward trend in new growth, like a significant drop in new growth. Stoughton seems to be an outlier, where we're doing unusually well compared to other municipalities. And I'm wondering, I apologize if you've already said this, so what can that be attributed? It seems like it's mostly in commercial and industrial, especially industrial, as a percent increase. But commercial maybe as a total amount. Yeah, go ahead.
So a majority did come from the TIFs ending this year. So we were able to capture that real value and accept the true dollars on that. And we also had some major projects, some major utility projects that added to our personal property. Major solar arrays that went on industrial buildings. So that was under, on page five, that commercial multi-use industrial, that went up 315%. So just collecting all of that data, that's really helped to make us that outlier in a good way.
Yeah, in a very good way. And we're sort of, we've benefited from a lot of good news lately, financial good news for Stoughton. So this is, this was really promising to see. I mean, there's a lot of projects that people have been working on for a long time. I think we're actually seeing some of the benefits of those, and we'll continue to see the benefits of it in the coming years. And so, you know, this is excellent news, and I really appreciate the work you're doing. Let's see. With regard, so the town meeting just recently voted to, to change the way we assess properties that are in the middle of construction. So rather than waiting for a project to complete, and then it go on our tax rolls as a completed project with a new valuation, the evaluations are now being assessed a little differently, where it's a percent complete will increase the value of the property by incremental steps along the way as it's being completed. And so we can capture some of the increased value of the homes and commercial properties or industrial properties sooner in the process. I'm asking you a question that you may have to sit down and research in order to, so if you don't have an answer off the top of your head, I appreciate it. But do you have any sense of how much of an impact that might have going forward for Stoughton?
Well, what I can say is that it doesn't necessarily change how we're going to assess any property. It's changing the lean date of properties for any substantial, for any occupancies, and for any major additions. So usually, the lean date is 1, 1, for this past fiscal year, 24. Now, the lean date would just change to June 29th of the following year, so that completion. Because we still do the percent complete. So it doesn't change how we assess it, it's changing the lean date. But that's something that will come into effect for FY26.
Okay, looking forward to it. And thanks, thanks so much. I don't have any further questions. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of statements. Canton, the reason why they're cheap over there is they have three very huge industrial parks. One is where the courthouse is. There's another one just up above it, and then there's the one that's off of 138. They have so much business, and it's not just on 138. It's industrial parks that rival our tech drive, if not dwarf some of it. So that's why Canton is so low. Their budget isn't too far off from ours, believe me. But that's, that's how that works. I want to tell you that I like the presentation.
Thank you.
I really, I really think, Julie, this is nice. And the pages were numbered. I didn't have to go, Steve, what, where are you? They're numbered. That's, that's all that, you know, when I got paper and I got numbers, I'm happy.
Awesome. Thank you.
So.
I thought it was the colorful folders. All right, nice.
So see, it's a simple thing that makes me. I mean, the numbers are good. I knew the TIFs were coming off, so it fed us, you know, like a lion, which I think is good. And if we set the right rate, it'll help us with next year's, too. So if there's any more, no other questions from the board members? Lou, do you have anything? No? I'll open it up to the public, being a hearing. And I see Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. This is a public hearing, and there is no information for the public. In the past, whatever you get, we got. Following, this is difficult enough, and when you have a hearing issue, it's even worse. I understand that the Board of Assessors is recommending 1.47 as the shift. Is it, is that the highest shift that we can make? Or is there a higher shift?
Go ahead.
I do apologize, the packet's right next to you now, so I do apologize for that. And no, that is not the highest shift. The highest shift would be 1.5.
Well, obviously, as a residential taxpayer, 1.5 would be my preference. I think that we need to take into account the fact, thank you, that the residents are paying two debt exclusions on top of the regular 2.5, plus new growth, so that we're already spending hundreds of extra dollars. So I would just prefer 1.5. Obviously, the recommendation is 1.47, and that's probably where you will go. As to, some people aren't in favor of the fact that we have a two-part tax rate. But I think it's important for people to remember, even though businesses don't send children to school, which is a major expense, they do affect the quality of life of the residents in the area. You have heard in citizen comment, time after time after time, the traffic issues people have. Maybe some people have a noise problem. I know that's not the problem that the gentleman has presented to the board before. But businesses in your residential area, and Stoughton has kind of a crazy zoning that's just kind of grown over the years. For instance, I live in an industrial zone, next to a 24-hour truck terminal, in front of an industrial park, across from a municipal golf course, across from a mass dot depot, and a restaurant. So some things we expect. Certainly, I've lived in my house long enough to expect the traffic. But you have heard residents come in and say that even though the business isn't particularly in their neighborhood, the traffic is. So that's something to take into consideration when you're considering a split. It's not fair to us residents, it needs to be fair to everybody. And if you go with 1.47, I can live with it. I think I heard the director say that that would raise the average residence 160-something, if we go with the 1.47.
That would be an increase of, on average, of $102.97.
I look forward to my tax bill. Thank you. And thank you for the copy of the information.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on the classification? I knew it. That's why I waited, Mr. Murphy. I knew you'd be ready to rock.
I'll be nice to you and kind. Can this information be put on the website, the town website, so people at home could have a look at it? That's all I can, thank you.
It is available online under the assessors tab.
Right, right. Seeing where there's no, would you guys like to say something? Anything? No? I'm giving you a chance to shine. Everybody's being nice tonight. I think the 1.47 is, is fair. I think it would be totally ridiculous to go to 1.50. It doesn't warrant, there isn't enough going to be made up with the TIF money that came off and become new growth. It's new growth that will pass with whatever else is being built. So there's, I don't see the need to go much beyond 1.47. We could probably pull it off at, at the 1.44, but it will give the residents a little bit of a break. And businesses, they keep things rolling. That's what, residential homes do not support the town. It's your businesses and that. You get a house with four children, there goes all the tax money in a heartbeat. So just to let you know, Cynthia, you sat here, I would have thought you would have learned that. So moving on, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Don't make, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Deborah. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. McCrisky.
Could you repeat the motion? I apologize. Was the motion to accept 1.47?
No, no, we're going to close the hearing and then vote.
I appreciate it, thanks. Sorry, Mr..
Mr. Gito. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the hearing's closed to input. Now, I'll entertain if there's any discussion on what's been asked of us, or if there's any changes somebody wants to make. But I'll entertain a motion on how you want to make the shift.
Mr. Vice Chair, may be recognized. The, so the 1.47, it seems like a good compromise. It seems, first of all, no matter how you, what we choose, given, you know, what's been presented to us, I know there's other options even beyond this, but, but these are all very reasonable, within a reasonable range. No matter how we slice it, the commercial tax base is going to get a bit of a break on other taxes compared to previous years. They've been carrying a very heavy burden for a long time, and so I think that's very, very appropriate. And also, no matter how, what we do, the industrial is going to take a much larger hit each year. And with regard to residential, I feel like all of them are fairly modest increases. So I see why, you know, it's just fairness of the, of the, of the many stakeholders, 1.47 seems to thread the needle between, between those three separate classes of taxpayers. And so I agree with it. I mean, if we wanted to go higher to like a 1.49 or 1.50, you know, I also think that's a good thing. But this would, 1.47 represents an average increase of $103 in taxes, or 1.55%. A break for commercial of 2.17%, so a reduction in taxes of about $601. And for industrial, increase of about, by, of about $930, or 3.84%. In all cases, I feel like this is, I feel comfortable with this. So if nobody else is going, is interested in input, I will make a motion to set the residential factor at 1.47.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you want to include those other terms that they wanted to vote? Do you want to put that all in one motion, or do you want to?
Actually, I feel comfortable doing that, even if we need to split it up. Actually, I feel comfortable doing that. If we need to split it up, if somebody feels strongly about it otherwise, that's fine. But so I propose the residential factor of 1.47, and I additionally propose that we do not opt for the open space discount, we do not opt for the residential exemption, and we do not opt for the small commercial exemption.
We have the motion and the second. Anybody have any discussion? Mr. Gito? I'll entertain the vote. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cave?
Yes.
And Mr. Gito? And I vote yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to close this hearing.
So made.
I have a motion to close?
So made.
Joe made it. I'll take you for a second, Deborah. How do you vote, Deborah?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? Mr. Cave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Julie. You're all set, and the town's all set. Thank you.
Mr. Sol, members of the Board of Assessors, thank you very much.
And Mr. Cave, you have the con.
So before I go on, I do want to apologize. I had mentioned that Mr. Vice Chair Carrera had the control of it, and then as soon as the presentation was over, I immediately started acting like I run this place. But there's a concept called Hamlin's razor, which is, don't attribute to malice what could be explained by stupidity. So my apologies, Mr. Carrera. You're very forgiving, man. I appreciate that. So the next item is continuation of the water abatement hearing for Joanne Gajemi. Hopefully, I didn't mispronounce her name. Perfect, thanks. Okay, it's good to see you again. Hopefully, you had a nice week and have some plans for Thanksgiving. So we're going to pick up where we left off. We do have an additional member here who wasn't here during our last meeting, so there may be some questions. This would be Mr. McCrisky, that if he wants to have some additional information, might hear something. But just to summarize, what we, and we didn't vote on this, so if I'm misstating anybody's thoughts, let me know. But my understanding of where we left off is that we had agreed that the water did pass into your house, that there was no evidence that there was any issue with the meters. And so, and so the water and the payment for the water is your responsibility. However, there are areas of this that we have control over that could positively affect you, but would not negatively affect other rate payers, other people who are paying for water. One is that because this water usage was unusual and also unusually high, it's being charged at a higher tier. So the, you know, cost per gallon is higher than you normally would have been paying. And that's in place to disincentivize high water usage. And you never intended to have high water usage, so you don't need that incentive to not do it. So one consideration we may take is to reduce the tier from tier three, which you're being charged at, to either tier one or tier two. Additionally, there was assessed penalties and interest, which once again, doesn't go to the cost of the water for us. And that is also something we can consider removing, and we discussed at the last meeting. But we wanted to make sure that we had some hard numbers in front of us, so we could actually know what the effect would be, one way or the other. So we received those, the documentation. I think we're able to proceed on from here. The one thing I would ask, if it's okay, either for, just either member of the Water Department. I wasn't able to hear very well, and I apologize at the last meeting, but given Ms. Gajemi's typical water usage, would she typically be tier one, tier two, or tier three?
Her average water usage is about 5,300 cubic feet, so she goes into the second tier.
Second tier is her, is her regular usage?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Are there any members of the board who have any further questions? Seeing none.
I don't have any questions. I have a comment or two.
Okay. I'll, you have an opportunity to speak. All yours.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to speak with the Water Director and Ms. Brown yesterday, and was kind of heartened, in fact, that we apparently are going to be able to finish getting the new water meters in, probably within the next six months, which will give us an opportunity to look at the water going through the system and into homes, for all the homes and hookups. And also that there are not too many cases that are in the same situation as this. I would just recommend that when we start putting those remaining 2,000 in, that we certainly do collect those, the first part of them in the areas where we have this kind of a problem. And I'm sure you're taking care of that. And that the new system that we have will be able to account for looking at the system on a very regular basis and capture these situations early. And I think, my hope, and I think I said this yesterday, is that we don't have any more of these hearings. This is the third, the third one of these on this particular issue. So that's probably an hour and a half of our time. And with the, with the information that we're collecting, we should be able to eliminate this. That's my hope. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Is there a determination by any of the members of the board? Is there a motion to be made given what we know right now?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I think we should take the interest waiving under the tier two, where it says if the board elects to waive all interest in price consumption at tier two, the credit to be issued is $2,544.55.
Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, second on that, please.
Okay, second. So the motion was made by Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Ms. Roberts. And so before we go on, I'll offer any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? No further discussion, so we're going to take a vote. Mr. Gito?
No.
No? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The vote passes by four to one. And so the folks from the Water Department will help fill you in with more detail. But in essence, the board is elected to waive all interest and penalties and to price consumption at tier two, which is your typical water usage. And so the credit that you're going to get back, the money you're getting back as a credit, will be $2,544.55. Thank you. Thank you very much. And--
So what does this, so we get this credit, and what is, my main objective was to get the lien taken off of the mortgage, and I will continue to pay out of pocket the water bill?
Yeah, so I don't know, unfortunately, the mechanics of how that would work exactly. I don't know. I think that they're probably going to have to work with the Water Department, potentially other departments within the town, to reduce that lien by this credit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ma'am, ma'am, if you reach out to me in the morning, I'll walk you through the departments to be able to issue that credit. All right?
Okay. So the next order of business is consider and discuss use of town vehicle policy. This is also--
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest the same process we discussed earlier, that each of the members take home the proposed policy. This is a recommendation of our insurance carrier, Risk Management, the Meyer Insurance Agency. I'll send you a new version tomorrow, where we've customized this to the existing language for Town of Stoughton. It says city and so forth. And I'd ask the members to review it, to send me questions, so that we can answer them or make recommendations for changes. Once I take those recommendations, I'll bring it back before the board, if that's--
Sure. I feel comfortable with that. Do other members of the board object?
Nope.
Okay. The only question I have for you just now, and if you don't have an answer, it's fine. But I was wondering if there's anything that precipitated this. Was it, is this just a standard, you know, review and recommendations based on a standard review?
It's a great question.
Or were the policies that, do we recognize an issue that we decided we need policies to address?
There's a couple of answers to that question, Mr. Cave. Great question. We do an annual review with the risk manager from Meyer, who points out what all municipalities are experiencing in terms of risk factor and where their exposure is. So they gave us a risk assessment on sprinkler systems, which we know failed a couple of years ago, on school buildings. Every one of the school buildings need to be fully investigated, and on transportation, where they're suffering, not necessarily from Stoughton, but suffering significant losses from the 351 municipalities around town. So they told us they had a standard policy. I took that draft, and I amended it to apply to the Stoughton transportation system. And we've made changes that we're incorporating into our CBA negotiations as well. So it's bringing together the unions, together with this policymaking body, to see if we can reduce the risk of vehicles in the Town of Stoughton.
Thank you very much.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, through you to the town manager.
This is right now a draft, open to discussion, correct?
Through the chairman, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Because this is what I do for a living.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to add a lot to it, probably double the size of it, especially when it comes to CDL vehicles. There's really nothing in here that mentions that. It'll be plug and play for you.
I'd be happy to take, certainly comments from you who are in the business. That would be excellent.
Is there any chance you would be willing to forward me the contact for Meyer?
Sure, absolutely.
And maybe it'd be best that I vet it with him personally?
That'd be great.
And, you know, then we could mold it into the Meyer contract as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
That's perfect, Joe.
Okay. Excellent. So we'll move on to the next order of business. This is consent agenda. We have one item on there. There's a application for Faxon Park permit for the Faith Baptist Church. I think they are looking to put up a nativity scene there. Is there, with regard to the consent agenda, is there, are there any motions?
Yeah. They're going to, they're going to meet with anybody from the town to make sure that where they're going to put this, the church, where they're going to put the thing is going to be okay? Is that how we're going to do it?
Yeah, so they have a map, they have a proposed location.
Yeah, I saw that.
And, yeah, with this, we'll make sure that--
Only because Faxon Park is like, it's usually the veteran thing.
Yeah.
I don't want to desecrate or cause a problem.
Sure, sure. I believe in, I think last year and the year before, there was a menorah up there. This is part of an application.
Adradal, yeah.
Adradal, thank you, Adradal. But I'll just ask Mr. Coulter, with regard to this request, can we just ask for some oversight to make sure that the location of the nativity scene is, you know, appropriate and doesn't interfere with other uses of the park and whatnot? Those safety hazards and--
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
Oh, it's probably-- Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Ms. Roberts?
Yes. I am in favor, and would approve this, but my question is if some other body organization wants their religious, I call it a menorah, but Ms. Scott called it something else.
It was a dreidel, dreidel.
If they also wanted to put something there, is that a restriction, or so is this, this location dedicated solely for this, but in the park itself, it could be another representational of spirituality?
See if there was enough--
Of this holiday season. What did you say, Scott?
So we have a, we have a Faxon Park permit application that anybody can fill out if they have some use that they foresee they'd like to be able to use it for. It could be, it could even be, you know, for a party, or it could be a number of possible uses. And so I think that we have the discretion to view those applications independently, and we decide whether or not putting something up is, if we agree to put it up. The question you're asking is a little bit broader, and I would want to, again, if we start to see an influx of applications from religious organizations, you know, it'd be important that we make sure that we are respectful of civil rights. And so if we start to think maybe this isn't a good idea, I'd probably want to engage town council to see what our next steps are. Generally, I'd err on the side of including and allowing people to, you know, express these things. But that's just, that's just me. Does that answer your question, Ms. Roberts?
Yes, it does. It's broad, and your explanation was as broad as my question. So I get the point. I just didn't, I wanted other spiritual organizations, and I wanted to be clear myself of what our policy was, because in some instances, on one hand, they talk of separation of church and state. So with, as an example, this is public park, but it's a religious, a religious nativity set. The other side of the coin is what, this is a small portion of Faxon Park, and what if another religious organization wants to put something there, and they bring forth a permit, will we consider it? And then you, so you answered my question. Your response was as broad as my question, and I respectfully accept that. We don't know until it comes forth, so thank you.
I can probably narrow that a little bit for you, Deborah. There's only so much space where they want it seen on the park streets-- There's only so much space where they want it seen on the Park Street side and then you have the commemorative stones that go for the, the veterans and I don't want any encroachment on that. So that, I asked Steve, the chairman, if he, if somebody, and I'm sure Tom's gonna have somebody out there to look at it, we're gonna have to figure out that on that curve there might be room for three, three things at the most, for, for visibility purposes. Way down the other corner, deep going out to 138, there's room down there, but I'm sure, you know, they, they want their stuff seen, but if it falls that way and it goes that way, then that's where you are. So I just think the respect is gonna be space and what it consists of being put up, that there was a dreidel there and, and I know the kids knocked it over and I think the, the rabbi had to fix it up and stuff, but I, I think we can control it to a, to a degree.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, I agree with your comments. The, I would say the only policy issue here is that anyone interested must submit an application and then it can be taken on a case by case, but nothing should go up, as Scott pointed out, without an application being submitted. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So there was a motion, I think, I think you made some, was there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
And I'll second.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, made by Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, Mr. Gito?
I just was here to answer any questions that you might have.
I appreciate that. I apologize, I didn't know you, I didn't know. But, but so you're from the, let's, let's just take a moment here.
Faith Baptist Church.
And welcome you. Welcome to, to select boards. You are from Faith Baptist Church.
Member of the leadership team. If I could say what brought this on is we've observed the dreidel on the Faxon Park the last few years and enjoyed it. And we said, to Ms. Roberts' point, it makes sense. Let's share what we all, let's have it much. So we put through the, I have a little bit of issue in that we started this process in September and no one could direct us to where we had to fill out a form. We didn't find anything out until last Thursday. We will be very happy to work with all boards. Mr. Carr, we share your concern about the veterans and I'm very thankful for them. We will do what you want.
Yeah, thank you for your patience with us and I very much thank you for your patience and thank you for joining us tonight. It's, it's a pleasure to meet you. Does anybody have any further questions of the applicant? Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Mr. Gito, how do you vote yes? Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And so that, that is approved, the application. Thank you so much, sir. We're doing well for time, so let's see, the next issue, the next item here is citizens' comments. How many people do we have who'd like to speak? We have one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so let me just read the legal statement just to make sure that everyone knows what the, what the rules are. So this is our revised policy after Barron versus Southborough. Before we begin citizen comments, I'd like to remind everyone of our state's sub-ground rules for this agenda item, which I, as the chair, would like to just voice as a preface before we begin. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, but shouldn't be a dialogue or debate. I therefore encourage the board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those that you want to follow up on and/or that warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put, I'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comments, if the comment doesn't require board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker and then move on to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone all the time they need, but we have a full agenda as we always do. So I'll ask the speaker, limit those comments to two, three minutes. It's obviously written for when we have comments at the beginning of the meeting, so you, don't worry about that last part about having a full agenda. We're wrapping up the night. But while public comments are not required to pertain to an agenda item, such comments must pertain to a matter within the public body's jurisdiction. Public comments on matters outside the public body's jurisdiction shall not be permitted. The following comments shall likewise not be permitted: threats, incitements, incitement to imminent lawless conduct, obscenities, personal attacks, defamatory statements, and sexually explicit statements. I encourage speakers to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to refrain from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of members of town boards or town staff, the citizens of this community, and/or each other. Thank you, let's proceed with the first speaker. I remind you, you have two minutes, I'll begin with, sorry, three minutes. Begin with Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. First, a shout out to the students at the O'Donnell Middle School. Recently, there was a, an early Thanksgiving dinner at lunchtime at the senior center. We were treated to turkey dinner, choice of desserts, and musical entertainment. Each of us at our place got a handmade card and a message. "I hope you have a great day today and don't forget that you are special and loved." I won't read the whole thing, but that one brought tears to my eyes. And as you can see, this is, this may have been printed, but this wasn't. And everybody had a unique card. We had a full house, 100 seniors. There are over 3,000 seniors in Stoughton. We've got to do something. Now, last week's presentation from the ADA audit gave me a little extra push. The, obviously, the senior center needs to be bigger. Part of the audit was that town meeting should not be held at the high school auditorium, which is not ADA compliant. To make it ADA compliant will cost thousands of dollars, because the ramps, the aisles are too steep. They have to be torn out. 36 seats have to be added for the disabled. That means major surgery to what's there now. I don't think I'll see those changes in my lifetime. But if we enlarged the senior center for the seniors, obviously, the senior center closes about 4:30, that means that a large space would be available to hold town meeting. Right now, town meeting is at the mercy of the school department. When the moderator wants to schedule something, he has to work with them and if they say no, that's the final answer. The town needs a space for town meeting that's ADA compliant and I'm sure if I have to go to every single building committee meeting, I'm gonna make sure of that. It's a disgrace that I'm paying hundreds of extra dollars in taxes for a building that isn't accessible to the disabled, for a, a high school auditorium that is simply not compliant. So somewhere in your capital plan, we need to expand the senior center with the idea that it will be a dual purpose. Senior center during the day and in the evening, plenty of space for things like town meeting or any large planning board meeting, for instance, zoning board meetings. We really shouldn't have a controversial project coming forward and expect people to go into that dinky little room, or even this room that only holds about 120 people. As we develop the town more and more, there's less and less open space. People want to protect their neighborhoods, they turn out for these things. We need to find a comfortable, accessible place for those activities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just as a follow-up, I would, if, Mr. Coulter, would you mind exploring the concept of a, of an expansion of the senior center? Where that might fit in our town priorities, you know, what the steps might be if there's a feasibility study that's required and see if we can develop a roadmap for what that might look like. Thank you very much, sir.
And that's not an original idea. I know that Mr. Kevy and I have talked about what other uses we could have for an expanded senior center. So that's not an original Walsh idea.
Right, you're welcome to take credit for it, but I think, yeah, I think being able to use.
That's a first, huh?
Being able to use a, a space for town meeting that, that we have more regular control of, I think would be beneficial to the town. Those schools have always been very helpful. Sometimes they have events going on that interfere with, with this and so it'd be nice. The next speaker, I'll go to the next layer and I, I think, was it Mr. Lurie, did you raise your hand up?
I did.
Sir, come up, sir. Thank you very much. Sorry, my memory's not that great. It's good to see you.
Thank you, thank you very much. David Lurie, I'm from 18 Robinette Road. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Little Theater of Stoughton. Jan Jones, unfortunately, she's out of the country. She wanted to be able to speak tonight. The message that she asked me to carry forward is that she's been working over the last two months developing a new Christmas show for the Railroad Depot. The request came from the CPC where they invested, as you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring it to where it is. And obviously, there's more money coming through in order to take it even to the next step. So the program is ready and it's gonna be even much better than it was last year. The show must go on. That's really what I'm here to tell you. You know, it's an old saying in the theater business, the show must go on. We have requests from stakeholders in the town. Jan took the steps of actually organizing and planning out what a, what a Christmas event would look like. She's got all the insurance in place to be able to pass muster for all the protocols that are needed. The thing that's only, the only thing that's missing is communication. We understand, you know, people are busy. This is, it's hard to kind of fit in a fun event when there's serious business being handled, so totally understand that. But in order for us to schedule and plan and make commitments and bring in all the groups that she's actually organizing with in order to get them on the calendar to come with us, is to get the communication to work. So we're looking at probably between Christmas and New Year's. She feels that we can actually incorporate, because Hanukkah is late this year and Kwanzaa comes after Christmas, that we can incorporate Christmas with Kwanzaa and Hanukkah and have a lot of fun. We want to bring romance back to the downtown. It's, we got a little baby step of, of an experience of what it would look like last year and we feel we could take it to another level this year if we get, if we can execute on all the planning that Jan has already done. So that's my appeal to you is to say, please allow the communication to take place so that we could actually open the doors again this year and have a lot of fun and bring romance back to downtown and have the show, the show must go on and actually have it go on. So we'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes.
Just want to follow up to that, that there was no communication. There was communication between myself and Ms. Jones a few months ago. The building is not compliant. The building is, doesn't have a suitable handicap bathrooms. The building is not handicapped accessible. The building is not in the shape for a public event. This is the second year that we've had this. Last year, we made accommodations at the last minute to, to try appease the plans that were made and brought forth even after that conversation was had last year. So I don't know how this board feels. I don't feel that the, the taxpayers as a whole should accept any liability in a building that is not to code. Not working bathrooms, not handicapped accessible. The floors are uneven. This is the second year, so to say that there's been no communications is not true, because I've had those conversations with Ms. Jones and I told her the same thing a couple of months ago. Okay, so to come in here again with the same pitch that is talking about the building like it's open and safe? We had to have two firefighters on duty on fire watch at the last one that the taxpayers paid for, because it was rushed through again to try to appease it, you know, there were definitely commitments made without approval and the event ran to make it the best it could be. But I don't feel right now that that's something that the taxpayers as a whole, and there's a lot of things that can be done to have a beautiful event in downtown or on, on Faxon Park or outside the train station if, you know, it could be decorated. But again, this is, I think we're setting a very dangerous precedent if we allow it to take place in the building as ways it's currently positioned.
Mr. Town Manager, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I heard wonderful things about the event last year. It was really well done and, and Joe is the one that reported to me that the community had a great time. And this time next year, we're gonna be able to host that event there. I, I think what I want to point out that perhaps people don't know, we're going out for a bid to spend the money given to us by the Commonwealth next week to put in brand new HVAC, brand new doors, brand new windows, all period protected. Right now, we're in the process of doing penetrations in the walls. So for instance, where you see pictures right here, there'd be holes in the wall, because they had to know what the building had for insulation, they had to know what the building had for wiring, they needed to know where, if they could run through their pipe runs for the HVAC. So in order to put out the bid, we had to have that information, so the wall penetrations. The walls were opened up in many places. I'd like to offer a compromise. If you look at that picture on the wall over there, it was from the early 1900s where in this room, there was a very formal gala, a ball. I would give all the resources of the town, the custodian staff and so forth to clear, through the board, with your permission, to clear everything out of this room and help decorate this room for the holidays, so that the theater could have their event right here. There's insulation coming out from those walls, old insulation that you can't afford to breathe in. It would just be irresponsible to have, from a health perspective, to have it there, but I've heard it's a wonderful event and we, in my view, we should support it and we'll dedicate our entire custodian staff to move everything out, move everything back in after the event, if you'd like to have it right here. This holds the same amount of people as the, as the train station, within, within 10 people.
Senior center might also be at a location.
Senior center could be at another location. We want to be real cooperative.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that was discussed with Jan when I spoke to her a couple of months ago. One of the options, we could have it here, we could have it at the Council on Aging as well. Those, those were discussed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it really would be wonderful to do at the train station, but it's an active construction site, you know, and so it's, there's a lot of reasons why it's, it's not, you know, appropriate, it's not safe. Mr. Carr.
I didn't, I didn't realize that we were that deep into getting information on the grant for that. I didn't, I didn't know that the walls and it could be a problem.
Just one more point, Steve, and Scott. It's, it's so very exciting. That is gonna be a beautiful venue, as if you were having a wedding there while still protecting the period costs. We got noticed a couple of weeks ago that we got the first $2 million. We now have another $2 million pending consideration in the federal government and so that is going to be a crown jewel for years to come to host this type of event. It's exactly the type of event this board voted to have as a community center.
Perfect, yeah, so Mr. Lurie, this year might be a bit, require some compromise, but next year and the years going forward, we'll be much more able to accommodate the request for, for using that specific building.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Didn't I hear that we could do something for Mr. Lurie this year?
In this building, yeah.
In this building.
Or, or in the Council on Aging.
Or, yes, but I mean.
The request was for, for, for the train station and that we're not able to do.
So the town manager and Mr. Lurie are going to speak and decide what to do and, and start this thing rolling, I take it? I mean, I, I didn't know if there was a conclusion to the discussion and that's why I'm asking the question.
The conclusion, Lou, is, is from my perch, I can't recommend using that building, because as Steve said, it's under. because as Steve said, it's under current construction.
No, I'm not asking for that building. I'm saying that you offered two, or at least one alternative.
Any other building we have in town, we'll cooperate to make it work.
Okay. I, I didn't hear that that was going to happen.
Oh, yes.
What I heard was there, we could do, but there wasn't a, "We will do."
Sure, we'll provide.
And so what I'm looking for is a "will do," and I'm hearing you say, "We will," and I'm going to stop talking.
We'll actually even provide the support staff, the custodians, to pull everything out of here should they choose here. Anything else they need, we're happy to support it. It's a great event. It's a great community event.
So then I'll just request that the town manager, as a follow-up, work with the Little Theater of Stoughton to, to offer alternative sites for this current year.
It won't be as romantic as the train station, right, Dave?
So move on to the next speaker.
Was that?
Oh, sorry, Ms., Ms. Roberts, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, was that a motion?
No, I just, we're just going to ask the, the town manager to follow up. Yeah, so it doesn't require a vote. So the next, sorry, the next speaker, Ms. Lyons. Okay, Mr. Dolinsky. I'm just moving down the line so I don't forget anybody. So I appreciate you, the, giving up your spot for the time being. Welcome back, sir. It's always great to see you.
It's always nice to be seen rather than viewed. George Dolinsky, Chapman Road, Stoughton. A number of weeks ago, I was up here with three items that I wanted to discuss. The three were the noise abatement policy, speed on, speed bumps or speed tables on Chapman Road, and lights at Lincoln and Pleasant Street. First off, I want to say thank you very much for the speedy response on getting a policy regarding the noise. I do have some questions, as did Mr. Murphy. We understand that this hearing will be held on the 10th. We'll ask all the questions then, but I do appreciate the fact that this came forward as fast as it did.
The town manager said something different. He said, "If you have questions, you're to submit them to him so that they can bring us a finished proposal. We're not going to have an open hearing of everybody stepping up and going, 'Well, how noisy is it going to be? What's the light?' He's going to do all, you're going to have to get them to him."
I'll get them questions. I got some I can write. I know how to spell. I know how to write. I can drop them off very easily.
Do you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
George, that'd be great. Any comments we got on things you'd like to see added, deleted, any comments you have, we drafted it with the help of Brian Winter. So any reasonable comments that don't require debate, we're going to add into the draft.
But the fact is that it came back as quickly as it did is very impressive, and I do appreciate that, as does, as does Mr. Murphy, who had to leave.
And the traffic issues are under the heading of Deputy Chief O'Connor, who's been asked to survey both areas and provide recommendations as to what we can and cannot do in terms of mitigation. I'm waiting for that information back from him. And then I will do the same thing and bring it to the board in draft form and, and get, after I get Deputy Chief O'Connor's comments.
All right. He and I tend to disagree on some of the speeders on the street, that's for sure. But that's what, that's what we're all about. We could debate.
But he is our resource. He's our traffic safety officer.
No problem. And I just want to try to control the speed. It's a residential area, and that's why I keep hopping on this thing.
George, I don't know how you, how you have problems up there in that gated community.
Scotty, let me sit there with a speed gun, let me chart the speeds, and I would love to do that. But at this point, we won't do that.
But it is in process, George, I assure you.
All right. Thank you. I have time. I figured I'd come up and nag.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, sir. Ms. Lyons.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you again.
Okay, so I just want to briefly thank Ms. Roberts. At the last select board meeting, when she brought forth, I believe she was a liaison back then from the select board to the FinCom Committee back then, which apparently back then actually cared about guiding financial principles.
She was a member of the finance committee.
Say that again?
She was a member of the finance committee that time.
Okay, well, it was very warming. I watched those, that time period in 2020, where they were advocating for, you know, financial policies. My, my concern that I bring forth to you, especially you, Mr. Cavie, because you're the chair, and you told me you're the one who puts items on the agenda, as if you could put on the agenda, actually bringing forth. I've given everybody on the select board that budgeting 101 and that levy limits a primer on Proposition 2 and 1/2, which actually discusses that excess capacity that Mr. Carrera was talking about recently, and, and actually get these fiscal policies in, in place, even if your discussion on the agenda item would bring forth the current finance committee, because, and, and I'm disparaging it a little bit now, and I'm on it. So it's not a good feeling that a finance committee, whose job it is, is to bring forth and recommend policies. But since Ms. Roberts, and I'd like to extend appreciation to you for bringing this forward last meeting, and then I just wanted to express my concern with Mr. McCrisky, bringing forth, I can't make a decision because we don't have exact revenue sheets. I've watched enough select board meetings to know that there's never, at this time of the year, exact revenue sheet. So why that would be called upon or for, to make a vote that everybody on this board, and I appreciate last year, was voting to do that. And on the papers that Ms. Robert brought forth, it actually states that as a choice. So if you could just bring forth that, I would appreciate it. And then to just a couple of previous speakers' point, Ms. Walsh, I didn't realize that the brand-new high school is not ADA compliant. I'm shocked at that. I just, experts, I just, I don't even know how that's possible. I'm just leaving that there. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you. Please bring that forward.
Thank you very much.
I know Ms. Roberts is for it, Mr. Carrera, and I know you said you were. So that's three. And I'm sure Mr. Jito wouldn't object to that. So I'm hoping you can bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So now we're moving to the, the back of the room. There's two gentlemen who I, I don't recognize. I apologize, but you're welcome to, to join us. Oh. Yeah. I, I need glasses. I actually do know you. Apologies, guys. Well, just hit the button once in front of you, and there you go.
There we go. Thank you. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Billy DeFradis, 14 Rayburn Road. I just wanted to.
You don't have to hold it. You just press it once, and, once the green light comes on.
Okay, sorry. First time here. I just kind of wanted to address the ongoing epidemic in the town. I'm not sure if anyone's aware of it or aware of it, of rats and mice. I mean, in my home alone, I live in Rayburn Road over in Pinecrest, in my home alone, in the past three and a half weeks, I have caught 30 rats. They have gotten into my car and caused probably about $9,000 worth of damage. Luckily, I have insurance, and that's being taken care of. But that's just my, my home, which I keep up. I mean, I keep the yard clean, trashes and the barrels and all of that stuff. It's, it's, if you see on social media, it's all over the place. It's crazy. And my point basically is, I mean, there's got to be something the town can do to help the people. I mean, we're all trying, you know, catching them and making sure trash is put away and all that stuff. But there's got to be something the town can do, whether it's a town-wide, you know, pest control department, or a team of highly-trained cats, something to, to, to help out. I mean, we're trying our part, but it's, it's getting out of control. Like I said, 30 in three and a half weeks. That's just my house. I can't even imagine what the rest, just my neighborhood is. And what I fear is, if, say, my neighborhood does our part, well, they're going to leave ours, and then all of a sudden, they're going to end up in your neighborhood and so forth. So that's, that's really all I got to say. I mean, there's got to be something maybe to even think about or consider, because I mean, we have departments for this and committees for that. Why don't we have a department that could assist the citizens in that, in, you know, one week one neighborhood, one week another neighborhood, and so forth. Just, just something to consider. That's all.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So I think there were a couple folks who wanted to make statements. Mr. Carrera, do you want to say something?
The rat, the rat problem is, is unbelievable in this town. And, you know, you, you think it's bad over where you are, and, and then I hear from people on Prospect Street, I've heard from people on Turnpike Street, and it, it always seems to be a little bit after something was built. Now, you're on Rayburn Road, and you know what's going on on Pearl Street right now, right? And then the other side of town, Turnpike Street, it's, it's the same thing. I saw it on the news. Boston is like, it's, it's like inundated. You turn the lights off and you turn it on, there's like 10 of them staring at you, and they're bigger than cats. I, I don't know what's, what's driving it, but it's, it is out of control. And it's, I just don't, Boston can't figure it out, and they, they have a force that's doing it. But the problem is, some people are taking it into their hands, and they, they're getting the poison, right, and know what's happening. The rats get it. They go across your yard, they drop it, the bait, and then your dog eats it. And dogs are getting sick, because people are taking that into their own hands. And there's three levels of rat bait. There's like a commercial grade, there's the stuff me and you can get, and then there's the, the stuff that doesn't work, but everybody buys it. But that makes your animals sick. So don't think if you throw it out there, the rats are going to pick it up, take it back. It doesn't work that way. Your dog, a cat, somebody goes, and then they go, "Where's, where's Fluffy?" Fluffy's dead in the woods because she ate rat bait. So I just, I don't know what to say, but I, it, everybody's saying it. And some people are afraid to say it because they don't want to be like, "Oh, we have a dirty house," and it's not. Rats will follow water. That's their, their favorite thing. They need water. Their, their, their systems run so high and intense that they're usually near water. And it, and it's just, they're everywhere. They're everywhere. I just don't know what we're going to do.
Yeah. Mr. Coulter?
Chairman?
Sorry, Ms. Roberts.
I agree with, I agree with Mr. Carrera. Is there something we can do? Because we were walking in a parade, and it was a dead animal in the street, and I said, "Is that a rat?" And Mr. Carrera said, "Yeah," and we had to step over the dead rat that was flat as a pancake. And that kind of raised eyebrows at that point in time. Is there something that we can do? I don't have the answer. I'm leaving it to the professionals, because it is getting out of control. They're all over the place. And it first started the conversation of accelerate it, when we were talking about the new fire station. And now it's just all over Stoughton. More and more residents are speaking out about it. Can we do something? Let the professionals handle it. And thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman. I just defer to Mr. Coulter on that.
Thank you. I don't know what the current status of it is, but I know Boston was considering hiring a rat czar, somebody whose, whose sole job was to come up with a way to rid of all these rats. I, I know Stoughton has an issue. I, I live not far from Stop &amp; Shop, and, and I've seen him as well. They, they took up, two years ago, residents in my, in my garage forever to get rid of them. And, and the same thing, we have a breezeway as well. This summer, a couple of them found their way in and shoot a hole through my door so they could get in and out more easily. So I was able to get rid of them as well. But it's, it's, it's crazy. And, and we, yeah, if we can find a way to do it. Mr. Coulter, you had some, something you wanted to say?
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. It'd be more, it'd be helpful in knowing where to start to solve the problem. Do you know if, have you attended, or do you know if the Board of Health is aware of this issue? Had there been any hearings on this? Because I've not seen anything in the minutes regarding this issue.
Not really, because I really haven't brought it to their attention, because I, I don't really think of it as a Board of Health issue, because I never really thought to bring it to their attention. When I think Board of Health, I think, you know, this restaurant or something, that not really, you know, pest control, that thing. I've never really thought of that.
So may I suggest, because we just finished the budget. It's not voted yet until the end of December. But the Board of Health did not request money to analyze or address or resolve the rat issue. So that would suggest to me that they have not taken up the issue. I would really recommend that you get on their schedule and ask them what they're doing to protect us. It's a public health issue. I agree with you completely. And, and, but do it pretty quickly, because if there's going to be money requested by them to be considered by the Selectment and the Finance Committee, it's got to be in the document we're preparing now. So if you can get before them as soon as possible, and I'll ask them to look out for it. That'd be great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Jito?
I would suggest the town manager talk with the, with the health officials in the town and, and do that. I mean, to ask them to go and get on the agenda and then, and then deal with this issue and do it in a time period that, that we can get it into the budget, I think is, is stretching it just a little bit. So if, if you don't mind asking the town manager to.
Sure, sure. I may have misunderstood, but I thought that was the, what you were saying was that, is, we'll have a couple of, of spokes here, you know. On the one case, it would be helpful if, if they were aware that the public recognized an issue, which they seem, maybe they seem to not, not be aware of. So having, having us tell them, we'll, we certainly will, we'll get involved, we'll, we'll help them hear what they have to say. But I think that it's also important that the public just make them aware that, you guys are seeing it too, and they ought to do something about it. So, you know, several spokes, but we'll, from, from the inside, we'll, we'll chat with them to, to get them moving on this, and it'd be helpful if, if you're interested to also put, get on their agenda, to raise it with them as well. Mr. Alst, do you have anything you wanted to say as well?
I have just a couple of comments. I don't like to talk too much, so. But I just want to come here today. I, I came with Billy because the rats have been bugging me, and he's been telling me at work all the time, "Man, the rats are killing me, man. They're bothering me." So I just, I'm like, go to in front of the select board, they'll help you, or they'll listen to you at least. But I just want to say thank you to our firefighters in Stoughton, who battled the fire on, I believe it was Saturday night, just two buildings down from the Porches Club, and they battled a three-alarm fire. It was our fire department, and I think, I think there was five or six other departments there helping, assisting them, and they were outstanding. They were outstanding. And I don't believe they get enough credit for what they do. It's a hard job. It's a tough job to go, you know, leaving your family at home and going into a burning house. You don't know what, what the outcome's going to be. So I thank our fire department for all they do. And also, just a, just a comment, because I see it on Facebook all the time, the South School, info, and back and forth, back and forth. I just think, based on the seniors, because my mom's 89 years old, and I stress that all the time. She's 89 years old, still cooks, still does cleaning, she still gets around, but she's on a fixed income too. I understand that. But to not take advantage of our, of the, of the money that we're going to get from the MSBA is foolish. It's foolish, and I'm fully supporting the South School, and I hope it gets on the ballot in April. But another thing also is, for these seniors, is to, to make them aware of the abatements that they have here, the tax breaks that they can get. My mom gets it. I just put in all the information downstairs. I don't even know who, I can't remember her name, but I sent it over to her, and gave her all the information that she needed. It's there. I mean, I think we should make, do a better job in letting the seniors know, all, all citizens in town know about the abatements that they have, that they, that could get to get that tax break. It helps. My mom gets $500 a year on a break. That helps. I'm, I mean, it's just maybe put out there, you know, advertise it or whatever, saying, you know, senior citizens, you know, you got this abatement that you can put you know, senior citizens, you know, you got this abatement that you can put in, and put in multiple languages. You know, so, you know, there's a lot of languages in town, so people can understand it. I mean, it's just a way to get the seniors aware of what they can get. And, I mean, I can't, I hope it gets on the ballot because I'm bringing my whole household, and I'm spreading the word. I'm hoping that our Portuguese community supports this because our town is, believe it or not, there's a lot of trash coming in, and that's part of the reason. We need to get this town going forward, not backwards. That's all I'm going to say. And thank you, and have a good evening.
I appreciate it.
And happy Thanksgiving to everybody and their families.
Thank you so much. Happy Thanksgiving to you as well.
I appreciate the time.
So, Mr. Coulter.
Great minds think alike. We asked Town Council to research the statutes for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There are more than 16 programs available to our senior, veterans, and disabled, and widowed women who have lost their husbands. So we're publishing it not only on our Facebook page, but the working group is having a whole section just on benefits to the town. And although I'm not at liberty to announce it, there is a woman in town who's volunteered to personally sit down with seniors to make out the paperwork. So we will be plastering the town with that information and every platform we can think of. And again, through the graciousness of this woman, who is an expert in this area, we'll work with seniors to make out the paperwork. We debate about $200 a year when there's benefits out there that can give you 500, a thousand. As Cynthia has spoken about very eloquently, that type of money is out there, and we're going to help the citizens find it.
I think that's great. I think that's great. Like I said, they need it. I understand. A lot of these elderly are on fixed income, my mom being one of them.
Absolutely.
My mom being one of them. She's not rich, believe me, she's on a fixed income, but, I mean, we've got to support it. We have to support it. We've got to keep on going forward and get these elderly to get their tax breaks, their abatements, you know, help them out. Even help them out, because some of them don't know how to fill out, don't know what they need. I mean, less a system. Yep, that'd be great. I appreciate you guys.
So to that end, we are, first of all, we compiled the list of all of the possible programs that are available. I know our town manager's going to be working with, you know, the Senior Center and the, you know, maybe perhaps the library to help train people on how to answer questions for people. And there's at least one person. We're looking also potentially to ask other volunteers that'd be willing to help sit down with seniors and fill out their forms with them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Or for them. So that, so that, you know, if, regardless of how people vote on this election, they ought to take advantage of the programs that are available to them.
Absolutely.
And if they're hurting, you know, there's, the people of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have developed these programs to make sure that their services are available to people who need it.
I think a lot of them are afraid to come forward because they don't know how to fill out the form. You know what I'm saying? They're like, oh, what am I going to do? I don't know how to do that. Couple of years ago, I didn't do, or three years ago, I didn't do it because my mom's like, ah, they just want to know what I have in the bank. I'm like, Mom, I'm like, you don't have anything. There's nothing to show, but it's like, it's like, you know, they're not aware of the tax breaks that they can get, you know, the help that they can get. And that would burn the, you know, the tax, all the taxpayers, especially the elderly, you know, especially with, you know, hopefully going forward that, you know, we got a new school. So that's it. I don't want to bulge you guys anymore. I just want to wish all of you guys, once again, a happy Thanksgiving for you and your families. Stay safe, and that's it for me.
Thanks so much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last item, I don't think there's anybody else who wanted to speak. Second to last item is the Select Board comments. Ms. Roberts, I know you said, I think you might have to leave. Are you able to, or do you have any comments for tonight?
Oh, just two comments. One comment, these comments are a result of citizens' comments. One is about rat control. Please, please, please do something about it. It's an epidemic everywhere, but if we can just take one step forward to control and kill and eliminate, that would be my view. The other is to help our senior citizens. Maybe we can have some type of information session at the Council on Aging and get the word. So that is to get, maybe produce flyer, media, and within, like, within the next quarter, which in the next three months, have something, some type of event to share more information. Periodically do this, but we don't get the turnout at the Council on Aging, maybe because the site is so small. But we have to do something about that too, to continually inform, communicate of all of the services that the town has available to them and to others. So including our veterans. If we could do something like that, I would be all for it, and I would actually support and help out, you know, do the legwork. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chito, do you have any comments?
No.
Thank you. Mr. McRuskey.
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, I just wanted to thank quite a few residents and some colleagues within Town Hall that reached out to me during the last couple of weeks. My mom had been in the hospital and having a pretty tough time. She's doing better. She's in physical therapy now. Knock on wood, everything's going to continue to go forward, but there were some very nice sentiments, you know, sent through me to my mom, and I just want to thank everybody for those. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vashir Carrera.
I have none, Mr. Kaby.
So I have, for our next meeting, after the vote of town meeting last Wednesday, I wanted to put together a set of principles and, you know, constraints, a list of some of the options that the Select Board has moving forward. I would like to read, you know, what is not yet a complete draft of that really very quickly. The main point is, I just want, I want this board to be well aware of some of the options, some of the constraints. Once I'm finished with this, which will probably be tomorrow, I'll forward it to everybody so you'll have the document in hand, and there might be some changes, and I probably have misspelled half these words. So I, hopefully I don't stumble over this too much. But this is, so this is for any potential de-exclusion vote and special town meeting that might be required. Fellow members of the Select Board, Stone's Select Board, as you are likely aware, Article 15 of Special Town Meeting 2024 passed 111 to 34. This was a petitioned article that garnered over 2,400 signatures. Its intent was to ask the Stone's Select Board to call for a revote of the de-exclusion to fund construction of a new school to replace the South Elementary School and the Wilkins Elementary School, which failed in June 2024. The numbers, though the number of signatures on the petition is impressive, and the passing margin of the vote by town meeting significant, the measure was nevertheless non-binding on the Select Board. It is now incumbent upon us to choose a path forward that best represents our understanding of our duty to all citizens of the town of Stoughton. What follows are our available options, and where relevant, the timeline we need to follow to move forward. We need to be able, to be especially mindful of the fact that the original appropriation in May 2024 has expired. So a new appropriation by town meeting is required if we choose to authorize a revote. So option number one, do nothing. The Select Board has the right to choose to take no action. In this scenario, a new appropriation is not necessary, and we will not have to hold an election for a de-exclusion. There is no calendar that follows as there's no action for us to take. Option two, do something. If we choose to move forward with an election, and therefore also a new appropriation, we have a few options. There are also several constraints we need to be aware of. Town Council, the interim Town Clerk, and I have identified the following constraints. Number one, the MSBA has extended the deadline for a new election to April 5, 2025. After that date, we will no longer be eligible for financial assistance by the MSBA. Two, our charter and the master and master general laws require the Select Board and Town Meeting to observe the following schedule for a special town meeting. A, the Select Board must open a special town meeting warrant. B, the warrant must remain open for at least seven days. After C, after the warrant has closed, special town meeting cannot occur, cannot begin any sooner than 42 days later. D, at least 35 days must elapse between the time an election is called and the date of that election. And E, the ballot measure must be voted on within 90 days of a town meeting appropriation. Additionally, I assume we intend, sorry, additionally, I assume we intend to target April 1 election, which will allow for cost savings and fit within the deadlines established by the MSBA. I didn't add in here, there's no requirement that we have an April 1 election. We can call the election, we can have a special election if we want it. I'm just assuming people wouldn't opt for that, but that's certainly an option. So option, in this case, option 2A is a special town meeting followed by an election. This is the most typical path, the one we are certainly most accustomed to. In this scenario, we would likely have to follow the following calendar in order to address the scheduling constraints listed above, as well as to avoid delays caused by upcoming holidays and vacations. December, so this is, we'll discuss this more when we get to the December 3 meeting of the Select Board. So the first date on here is December 10. That would be the day that we open a special town meeting warrant. 12/17 is, close the special town meeting warrant, which is, would have left it open for seven days. Failure to meet this deadline may cause delays because the following Tuesday is Christmas Eve, and the Tuesday after that is New Year's Eve. February 3, 2025, special town meeting begins. This is the first Monday after 42 days elapses, which takes place on, so the 42 days would bring us to Tuesday, January 28, 2025. If we have a special town meeting on February 3, the Select Board can meet the following day at the earliest to call for an election. That's 56 days before the April 1 election, where the law requires to be at least 35. That would be 56. If the appropriation passes a special town meeting, this is the earliest date the Select Board can call for an election. We can choose to have this election on any day we want. However, the town's regular local election takes place on April 1, so that seems like an ideal time. We may, however, call for an April 1 election on any day in February up until the 25th. That is 35 days prior to April 1. And then, so April 1, 2025, that's combined the local election and ballot measure election. 90 days before April 1 is January 1. So long as both special town meeting and the election occur within that window, we have successfully navigated all constraints and deadlines. Now, the other option, which I haven't fleshed out entirely, is to schedule the election first, followed by a special town meeting. We wouldn't be able to take advantage of the annual town meeting because this appropriation has to take place before April 5. So we can't wait until May. But, and I don't mind laying out the timeline, I haven't done that quite yet, but that would require us to call an election now, have one within, you know, within the next 35, 35-plus days. And then after the results of that, call a special town meeting that would happen probably sometime in April. And then we'd have another town meeting 30 days later. So that's certainly an option, and I will lay out what the schedule would look like. But just to summarize, and I no longer have any text to read in this case, first option is, we choose not to have an election, not to have an appropriation, and we're done. The next is to have, call a special town meeting followed by an election, and the reverse is also, is perfectly legal. It's equally lawful to hold an election first, followed by an appropriation by town meeting. That's not something we've done in the past, but there's, and there might be reasons, other reasons not to do it or to do it. But those are our three major options. As I said, I'll flesh this out, I'll send this to everybody, make sure you have a copy of it, of what the calendar might look like. My chief concern is that if we do pick, especially option 2A, which is to have a special town meeting followed by an election, having Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve land on Tuesdays means that if we miss that December 17 deadline, then we might miss the entire option to do this. We wouldn't be able to have, close the warrant until January, and then we'd need 42 days before we could have town meeting. That would move it into very late February, maybe March, and we would have missed the deadline of February 25 before we could call an election for April 1. So we do, we have sort of, we have to thread the needle. It's not going to be hard, but we just have to be mindful if we choose that option of what we want to do. Now, if we choose not to do nothing at all, then that certainly makes life a lot easier. But, for some people, but the, but those are our choices. I want to make sure you guys are aware of that now and able to sort of synthesize this information, understand the constraints. As I mentioned, I'll email this out tomorrow, and we'll discuss it at our next meeting, which is December 3. So those are all my comments. If we have no other comments, we have town manager comments.
Nothing to announce, Mr. Chairman, but with respect to the outline, may I suggest for the members to consider that this debate happened at a one-agenda meeting, because I know there'll be people on both sides of this issue that would want to listen in, and I would suggest it be a special Selectments meeting just for this agenda item. Thank you.
I agree with that.
So that would be our next meeting, the 3rd, and I don't believe we have any public hearings or anything otherwise scheduled for next week. If we do, there might, some other things might have to pop up. So it sounds like we do have some items that might have to be on there. And we'll have to navigate that when we get closer to the time, to figure out how to, we'll need to figure it out by tomorrow, actually. So we'll talk about this tomorrow and figure out what's, how to accommodate that.
Is that going to give us enough time? You kind of sprung it on us. We don't have enough time to even wade through all of the options that you gave.
So on the 3rd, we'll have, we can discuss this on the 3rd. We don't have to do anything until, at earliest, December 10. So we can discuss it on the 3rd, we can also discuss it again on the 10th. And so I think we have enough time. That gives us two weeks. And meanwhile, I'm sure people will be calling and emailing us, sharing their thoughts. And I know for myself, I'll be spending the time thinking about it every day until we make a decision.
One other question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is it the will of the board to, once you finish this letter, to post it on the back page of the Town Crier and to post it on our Facebook pages?
Yes, so far as I'm concerned, it's a public document. It lays out schedules and options, and I think that anybody who's curious to know what those would be, I think, has the right to have it. So I feel very comfortable making sure that this is spread as far, you know, that nobody has difficulty finding this information. That's all I have. Yeah. Okay, so if there's no other comments...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Carrera, seconded by Mr. Chito. All in favor, Ms. Roberts?
Aye.
Mr. Chito?
Yes.
Mr. McRuskey?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. As I mentioned, our next meeting will be, will be December 3. In the meantime, please, everybody, enjoy your Thanksgiving and stay warm, be well. Meeting adjourned.